Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee meeting of June 7th, 2023. If everybody would join me to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Ava Petti, please. Okay? You see it?
Thank you.
Okay. So, we are going to be going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body, WHA collective bargaining, to review the Unit C administrative assistance. And this will be a roll call vote.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Okay. Fred?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
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 Steven? Myself? Yes. And is she on?
Lisa, you are? You don't need her for executive, because she's just a reporter.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Move to my executive session.
Executive session. Regarding to the Unit C collective bargaining agreement.
We have to call Lisa again. I think she disconnected.
Wait a minute.
Well, you can keep talking, but I just got to get her back on.
Okay. So, we're going to take a vote. It has to be a roll call vote, because Lisa Green is hopefully going to be connected. So...
Jen, do you have her number? Okay. Let me see what I can do.
If not, we can still do it, right?
You can just do it.
Move to the next item, maybe, and come back.
Yeah, we could do that while we try to connect with Lisa.
Okay.
So, why don't you just turn that down?
All right.
And we can start with Dr. McEwen, Ms. McEwen.
Okay.
Public comment. Our public comment or Ms. McEwen?
Yes.
You can just hang up while I text to George, and I'll have a call in again. Unless you can turn that down a little.
That's popular, eh?
That's okay? Okay.
Yeah, that's okay. I got it. I got it.
Yeah.
I will start with public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? All right, seeing none, I will go to the next, which is the Dr. McEwen Award presentation. Margaret McEwen is here this evening. Would you like to step up?
Ms. McEwen, if you'd join, come up to the podium, please.
Good evening. Thank you once again, Jeff and George and, who is Beth? Beth? And school committee members, presenters and guests, for giving me the opportunity to announce the this year's recipient of the Dr. John F. McEwen Do What's Best for Kids Award. For those school committee members who are new, or for those guests who are not familiar with this award, let me just take a few minutes to explain its background, the criteria for selection, and its purpose. With the support of the Whitman Hansen administration, this annual recognition was first awarded nine years ago to acknowledge the legacy of John McEwen, who served as the superintendent of this district from 2001 to 2009. I can't believe it was that long ago. John strongly believed that a school was not a building, but a community of support that maximized learning for all students. He personally acknowledged members of the staff whenever their role, when whatever their role, in carrying out their responsibilities to do what is best for kids, without expectation of financial compensation or recognition. The award is designed to recognize the unsung heroes, everyday heroes, who make a difference in students' lives. The award is given to a staff member or team employed by the district who has demonstrated extraordinary vision, creativity, competence, and execution of their job responsibilities during the current school year. Teachers made an enormous impact on John's own success. He himself was from a highly dysfunctional family. As the oldest of a blended family of six children, only three of whom graduated high school. He experienced firsthand how much more effort it takes for some students to feel supported and valued for what they can contribute to their community. For this reason, John felt very strongly that some students in a traditional, some students needed alternative learning and living experiences in a traditional school so that they too would feel valued in what they could contribute to society once they moved on from school-age experiences. Recently, I heard on the news that when successful students were asked what the best advice was that they had been given as they graduated from either high school or college, the answer was to listen to yourself to decide what is best for you to do. The goal as educators is to assist each student to recognize and realize their dreams of who they want to be. In a letter to the staff in November of 2007, John wrote, and I quote, "I've always believed that success is not measured in money earned, but in relationships shared." This year's recipient captures the essence of John's idea of success. He'd be thrilled that the recipient is an educator who is valued by her colleagues, her supervisor, and her students for how she has adapted a school curriculum to meet their specific needs. In nominating this person, her supervisor's accolades reflected the essence of the award. According to her supervisor, the recipient loves being an educator, who delights in seeing her students thrive in a classroom with lessons related to real-life jobs that they have an interest in and will be equipped to continue after they leave Whitman Hansen. Moreover, the companies or services that she partners with report that her students are the most professional and well-prepared for the vocational tasks that they are asked to perform. Everyone in this room should be proud of the Whitman Hansen Transitional Vocational Program, established for the students 18 to 22, who are ready, willing, and able to join the workforce, doing a job in which they can derive personal satisfaction. It gives me great pleasure and pride to introduce the 2223 Dr. John F. McEwen Do What's Best for Kids Award to Kathy Bouzine. Kathy, I know this is very good. Let me just finish, so that people all understand what you do. She's the creator, designer, and coordinator of the Whitman Hansen Transitional Vocational Program. In addition to being recognized tonight, Kathy will receive public recognition at the opening of school year, which she'll probably don't like. And she'll also receive a $500 award that she can use for her own professional development, offer a program that is related to what she does. Her name will be added to the list of previous recipients in the foyer of the Dr. John F. McEwen Performing Arts Center. Please join me again in recognizing Kathy.
Ms. McEwen, the certificates right there. If we can get a picture, that would be great.
Yep. Okay. You were the painting. You're so nervous. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is just a card. I just, um, I guess it's curious.
So, as Mrs. McEwen finishes up, I'm going to take the rest of the meeting to talk about Kathy, because you could. She is one of the most amazing educators I've ever had the pleasure to meet. This award doesn't even speak to what she does for our 18 to 22-year-old students in our transition room to career. She works with each individual student to make education and life skills fun for them. I go down and see them frequently, and they are a trip. If you ever have an opportunity to come over, if you want to visit Kathy's classroom, it is a warm, accepting, loving environment for all who walks through that door. You've seen pictures of Rocket Riley in the paper. That's one of Kathy's students. Kathy participates in our unified programs in basketball and track right now, and she is well-deserving of this award. The ruse that I got her here tonight, where she was presenting about her program, and she was extremely nervous. This is not her, this is not her, so I got, I got you. And her husband and her daughter are seated right behind her, and two of her paraprofessionals get to see her get this award. She's very deserving. So, thank you, Ms. McEwen, for continuing this tradition, and congratulations, Kathy. Why don't you come out up to the mic? I know it's not you, but come on up.
Yeah, you really got me.
Yeah, I did.
It honestly is an honor to work and do what I do every day. So, I thank all of you, but I have to thank you, Jeff, for giving me the opportunity 13 years ago, and I couldn't do what I do if I didn't have, of course, the support of my family, but also my, my team, my parents, who I work with a group of women, they all happen to be women, who, um, the integrity of our students, the, the respect that they give our students, and the integrity of our program. It's just, I'm just very, very blessed to be surrounded by so many people that care about our students' success and enjoy them. So, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. And I hope somebody's taking you out to dinner. I hope somebody's taking you out to dinner now. So, thank you so much. And feel free, you guys can go. You don't have to sit there.
Okay. Next on the agenda is school committee meeting protocol discussion. So, this is me.
Do you want to do Lisa? Lisa? Let's give her a minute right now.
Oh, she's calling in?
Lisa's calling in right now.
Oh, okay.
Lisa, are you there? She's lost your voice, too, which is great. Is it still music? Okay. Until I can not hear music, you can move along with the agenda, and I'll wait till the meeting starts.
I don't know. It's done. She's off. Is she on? No.
It's so, like, soft. It keeps stopping.
Oh, that's what I thought, too. Okay. Just go on with else. Okay.
If not, I'll use myself.
All right. So, in looking at some of our past meetings, I've come up with a few ideas that I would like to share. One of them is about public comment. Public comment, we'll continue to have, as we do at the beginning of the meeting, 15 minutes, three minutes of parson, but unless it is necessary, that will be the end of public comment. This is a school committee meeting, and it's up to us to discuss our options and all our things that we need to discuss. We will not, nobody will be recognized from the floor except by the chair, and maybe during budget time, we might ask for our people from the, from the public to speak on different items, but once public comment is done, it is up to us to carry on the meeting, and we would like to continue to do that. So, we need to accomplish our work, and we need to not get done at 10 o'clock, when everybody is exhausted from working all day, and your minds aren't working that well. I know myself, as the night goes on, you get more and more tired, and tempers flare up, and we don't get the good work done, and we need to get the good work done. Another issue is about, and I've talked to a couple of the board members about this, questions for the superintendent, unless they are questions that occur during the meeting, should come through the chair. That's because sometimes the superintendent gets three of the same questions from three different people, and, you know, it's a lot of work he's got his day to do. What's going to happen is, like, I'll present it to the superintendent, and then everybody is going to get the response. So, even if you were the one who asked the questions, you're not going to be the only one who gets the answer. Everybody's going to get the answer. So, everybody is on the same page, everybody has the same information, so we don't have one person knowing something and somebody else saying, "Well, I didn't know about that. How come you found out?" So, we want to make sure everybody is on the same page. So, I think this is the way we can do it, but like I said during the meeting, if you have questions for the superintendent, absolutely, if you don't go through me, you can ask them. Another question that has come up, and Chris and I have discussed this, is about the minutes of the meeting. So, I went to the MASC and got some information about minutes, and I think there's a little misconception about what minutes should be. Minutes of a meeting by MSAC, it should be a brief summary that is sufficient to meet the standard that a citizen reader will be able to understand what was discussed. It is not expected, nor necessary, that minutes will be verbatim transcripts, reported on every school committee member board comment, or summarized every public comment made during the public comment period. So, what, what it's supposed to say is just what happens, and of course, it has to say also who's here, who, what the vote was, if anybody's on remote, and who is that. Those all have to be recorded, but as far as what all of us are saying individually, we don't, it doesn't need to say that. We have audio and we have video that gives the blow-by-blow description of all our meetings, so that should be plenty. So, I just wanted everybody to be respectful about, with our secretary of the meeting, who is Jen, not being able to take down everybody's single opinion of what they're saying, okay? Because that is not required by MASC. So, I want to go by what is required. Okay? And my last thing for this part tonight is what Chris brought up at the last meeting, and that was norms and what we're going to do. So, we're going to have a meeting in July, so I'm going to ask everybody to look and let me know what Wednesdays, probably, I should say, what one you can't make, so I can figure out when we could have a Wednesday meeting in July. And one of the things on that will be discussing the norms. So, what I'd like everybody to do is to kind of think about, what do you think would be a norm of a meeting? And if you're not really sure what I'm talking about, I can give you a couple ideas of what I mean. It would be like respect, listen to others' opinions, be aware of yourself and how you are presenting yourself, just to think about, what do you think is important for people during a meeting and in front of the public face, and how we should look. In July, we'll talk about these, we'll come up with a set, and then we're going to put them on a poster, and that poster will be displayed in front of every meeting, so that everybody can be reminded about what we all decided was important to run a good meeting, okay? Not just the chair. I want everybody to make a decision about what do you think is an important item to put on this list of how we should behave during a meeting, okay? If everybody could do that for me, I would appreciate it. So, everybody has an assignment, which usually we don't get assignments. I know.
Again, the Whitman Middle flashbacks.
I know. There goes the sixth-grade teacher. But I hope that everybody is understanding of what I have brought up tonight, and hopefully that we can work on these things and see how they work out. And with that, I...
Lisa's on.
Oh, Lisa was on?
So, you can move to a vote. A motion for acceptance.
Okay. So, now we're going to go back to...
Lisa, can you hear us? Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. So, now we're going to vote to ratify Unit C collective bargaining agreement. This will have to be roll call vote, because Lisa is remote. Okay? So, we'll start with Steve.
Motion to accept the memorandum of agreement, Unit C, as presented.
Second.
Second. David? Okay. Steve?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
And me? Yes. And, sorry, Lisa?
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for hanging in there. Appreciate it.
Goodness, she sounds hot.
Thank you.
Oh, I wonder if she doesn't feel good?
No.
Okay. All right.
We do not have a student advisory...
We don't have student advisory updates?
Nope. So, you move to approval.
So, now we're going to be moved to approval of meeting minutes. We will start with April 18th.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Okay. Uh, April 27th, 2023.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And May 22nd.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay, superintendent's report. So, this is my first time doing this and not knowing exactly. So, what I've done is kind of put together a little bit of what some of the comments were and how people felt. Overall, everybody felt that Jeff was doing a proficient job in the majority of people.
Are we down to the evaluation of the report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You jumped.
I jumped. No, never mind.
I'll report.
Go back. Go back.
I'll report. I was like, okay, we'll go to that. That's fine.
Sorry.
No worries at all. So, graduation, let me just give you a little update in where we were at with graduation. We had two graduations the other day, or last week. The class of 2023 Whitman Hansen Regional High School graduated 265 students on Friday night. A little touch-and-go with weather. We did a little bouncing around. We moved up the ceremony an hour and then did a reverse, and we gave out diplomas first, which worked really well, and the anxiety of rain dissipated once that last student got their diploma. So, thank you for coming, those who did. On Thursday evening, our community evening school graduated 17 students. 15 were in attendance. Our first support animal walked across the stage, literally, and it was pretty awesome. Good ceremonies by, by both the director of CES and the principal of the high school. Just to give you a little bit about our senior class, I'd like to take that liberty. On decision day, so our counseling department does a decision day for all students, and they can either report what they're doing or choose not to. There's, there's no pressure involved. So, we celebrated many different paths of those students listed below. Serving our country in the military, three students are entering the Marine Corps, one student entering the Navy, one student entering the Air Force National Guard, and one student entering the Air Force, and one student receiving a full-ride ROT-Scholarship to WPI. Career and tech programs, about 10% of our seniors reported they're heading out to career and technical training, union apprenticeships, et cetera. Some of the careers included IBEW Local 103, EMT programs, cosmetology and estheticians, carpentry, welding, plumbing, and sheet metal programs. Employment, 10% of our seniors said they were just going right to the workforce. Colleges, 75% of our students said they're going to college. Two years were 14%, four years were 61%. Outside of New England, we have students planning to study in New York, California, Mississippi, Ohio, Kentucky, South Carolina, Florida, Washington DC, and Pennsylvania. One of our students, I believe the first one in Whitman Hansen history, is attending Howard University, which is a typically black college/university, difficult to get into. And then we had two acceptances, two Ivies, a Harvard and a Yale, and one Mass Institute of Technology. As far as scholarships, that went out. Dollars for scholars gave out $169,000. Thank you, folks in Whitman and Hansen, for giving this to our senior class. And local and community scholarships were 120, 658, totaling $289,658,000 went out the door to our students Wednesday evening. Our two top students, the valedictorian was Noah Roberts, who will be attending MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, and the salutatorian was Leah Cataldo, who's going to UMass Amherst. So, those are the, some of the pieces of all of our senior class, and I think it's important that we highlight where everybody kind of has the option to go. Chris?
Just, first of all, I got to apologize to the teachers, the staff, and the students of the evening program, because I missed it this year.
Yeah.
And it's always been one of my favorite things to do as a member of the school committee. It's an incredible night to get to sit and watch these families celebrate the achievements of these kids that have all gone through a lot of adversity. I don't know if I missed the invite, but I was going to say, maybe going forward, if we could invite the school committee members to that event, because it's, it's something that I think everybody should try to attend, and I apologize again for missing it, but I congratulate them all.
Thanks, Chris. So, for me personally, I spoke at the CES graduation, and both graduations are very important to me. The CES, as a, as a former alternative education teacher and director who started a program, it's a special evening. So, I agree with you, Chris. It's awesome to see, and I really appreciate the community and this committee giving us as a school the opportunity to have an alternative program. A lot of schools don't. They don't support that, and those students have to find a place. We've had a program since 2005. We've modified the program. It used to be a pay-as-you-go program. I made the modification back in 2012 to make sure it was free to all our students that needed an alternative setting. So, I appreciate the community, and I don't think folks know about it, and it is an opportunity for the non-traditional student to be successful. So, that's a little bit about our senior class, and I do have some other graduates, but they're graduating in a different way. They're retiring. So, they're finishing, and I just want to recognize these teachers, because we won't have another school committee to recognize them, and I will be seeing them all on Friday to give them a certificate from the state, from the State House, and a little gift from us. So, not in any specific order. Lynn Gentile from Indian Head Elementary for 15 years of service, Nina Costellini from the high school, 18.5 years of service, Elizabeth Moses Malone from Indian Head, 23 years of service, Patricia Porter Collins, our preschool principal, 34 years of service, Patricia Tokars, Indian Head, 25 years of service, Dot Kelly, 26 years of service from Duval, Pat Unis from Middle School, 20 years of service, Susan Hoey from Conley for 22 years of service. I got to kind of wait for this gentleman, who just completed his 50th year. Peter Neme is retiring this year after 50 years in Whitman Hansen. He started in 1972. So, all these educators will be missed, and they've given tremendous service to the community, and I really wanted to announce it publicly in front of the committee. So, folks, no, we keep our teachers here. What you read in the paper, we, we keep our folks here, and people enjoy being here. Again, through the community support and the support of the school committee, it's a good place to be. It's a really good place to be. So, just wanted to recognize them, and they will be finishing their careers on Wednesday, I think, at the bell. They will be excited to be going, moving forward, so.
And if you want to know that they like it here, just ask Peter.
Yeah, ask Peter. I also have Bob Rogers here, the athletic director. He does have a field trip that I'm hoping you could, you could see before he leaves today, and a change in our publicity costs. They're in your packet, but I know people have had issues on the drive. And he also, I asked him to give a brief update on athletics at the end of the year, how we did athletically, how many students participated in our athletic program at the high school. Bob?
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. So, I just handed out just a brief summary of the year in Whitman Hansen Athletics, and I know a lot of times when people look at an athletic program, they look at, how many championships did you win? You know, how many banners are going up? But it really, the athletic program is far more than that. It's, it's great. We all love to win, right? We all do love to celebrate a team that does well, but what I'm happy about is the participation numbers were very strong this year, 581 students across 27 different sports. And our teams performed, as you can see here, 36 that I know of, community service projects that our teams were out in the community, from helping veterans, from helping even just like a widow in Whitman that her husband had passed away, and one of our teams adopted her and took care of mowing the grass and, and shoveling the snow, all the different things that our kids do in the community that will help shape them as they leave Whitman Hansen, to understand what it means to serve. Our teams did do well in terms of competition as well. Fall cheerleading won their 30th straight league title, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and baseball, all won their league titles. Baseball is still alive. They are playing in the Round of 16 tomorrow, if anybody wants to be there, tomorrow at 4:00. It should be exciting. It's a very good team. First-year coach, Matt Hendrickson, has done a really good job with, with the kids. We did have three Division II sectional wrestling champions, Charlie Lucier, Austin Gamber, and Cooper Lucier, really incredible accomplishment, and then Charlie Lucier won the Division II state championship. So, he's up on that banner that's in the gym. It's an incredible accomplishment for Charlie to do that as well. I'm not going to read through all the athletic awards, but you can see them all there, all the different awards that we gave out. I think one that I would like to point out is at the very bottom, which was Derek Schwade. Derek is a young man who didn't play any sports while he was in high school, but he's been the manager of several of our teams. In fact, this year, it's the first time I can ever remember somebody that was a manager of four teams in the same year. In the winter, he did both hockey and basketball, and he was at every single game. Uh, in the fall, he did football and in the spring, he was, actually, I guess you could say five, is he did both softball and baseball as well. Uh, so Derek got that award. So we have that there. And then, um, also this year, just kind of a year in review, we did, uh, back in October, we had our Hall of Fame. I have that there for you so you can see that. And I just also thought I'd take this opportunity to let you know about a couple of things that are coming up. The first is our captains council had our first meeting of the school year yesterday and we had 56 students in this room, uh, to begin the process of understanding leadership, understanding the process of service and the impact that they can have in this school, on the culture of the school and what happens every day here and not just for the athletes. And the captains council is, I sent out an invitation to all the students in the school, whether they play sports or not and whether they're a captain or not. We call it the captains council because it is the leadership and we do require every captain to, to go to those classes. However, we want other students to go as well. And I was really happy yesterday that we had several students that were not athletes that were part of it. And one of the young men came up to me afterwards and, uh, he just loves being there with all those other kids and I think he's gonna have a really, um, profound impact on that group as, as we hopefully help our school move forward through what we have right now, obviously, are some very tough times. Um, focus of the captains council is not just leadership, but it's on service, character building and culture and, uh, help our students shape who we wanna be and what we're about. And, um, to follow that up along the same lines, every year at the end of the school year, we meet as a coaching staff, all of the coaches at all levels, not just the varsity coaches. Varsity, JV, freshmen, all the volunteer coaches that you see on the sideline, we get together, uh, we're gonna have dinner together. It's, uh, nothing fancy, just some pizza at Meadowbrook. They're very nice to host us. And it's, it's, I call it a roundtable because we'll put them in little groups, some experienced coaches and less experienced coaches, and we'll be talking about some topics that can hopefully, uh, help our coaches grow, the professional development that we can seek as a group and some ideas of how we can move forward. Um, everything from how do we pay attention to, uh, the last student on the, you know, the, the so-called guy at the end of the bench to your best player as well. And how do you incorporate all of them together to make sure that everybody has a good experience regardless of their ability level? Um, so we do, as you can see there, we have several topics on there. One of the topics that we have also is how do we help the coaches build strong relationships with the parents, healthy relationships with the parents? Uh, obviously, we all know that one of the things that gets in the way of those healthy relationships is playing time and, and when maybe a parent is, doesn't think that their, their son or daughter is getting the experience that they feel like they deserve, how do you get past that? And so we're gonna talk about some strategies about how to help some coaches do that so that at the end of the day, whether you were a starter or you at the end of the bench, that everybody can end the season and say, I'm glad that I was part of this. Uh, so many people that have gone through Whitman Hansen as adults, they stay in this community, excuse me, and they come back and no offense, everything that happens in the classroom is really important, right? We all know that. But it's really the bonds that they create, whether it's in sports, music, art, all those extra clubs that they have, that's what they remember. And, um, I'm gonna make a really big push this year to try to get more students on teams. We're going down to the middle school on Monday with the captains and the captains are going to be presenting some ideas because it really, especially when they walk through the door as freshmen and when they are on a team that first, you know, the first month of school, when they're on cross-country or they're playing freshman football or whatever sports, soccer, they choose to, to be on a team, uh, their chances of success here, of being connected, uh, are so much greater. And so that's what we're gonna be doing on Monday. The captains and some of the coaches are gonna come with us and really try to get them to do that. And we're gonna have some activities at the high school lunchroom as well when we come back in the fall, uh, to try to get the students that are not connected, um, our English language learners, for example, we really wanna try to connect them to our school in a better way. So that's one of the goals that we have, um, for next year. And then the last thing I will just, uh, point out is August 20th, uh, I know everybody doesn't wanna rush through the summer, but it will be here and that's our athletic first night program. And, um, every year at that program, we'll go over the rules and some of the procedures, some things that parents need to hear and the kids need to hear. But I also always bring in a speaker, somebody that I feel is, will, will help us where we are right now as a school. Uh, last year, uh, Pam Garimone, who was an outstanding speaker, she, she helped kind of shape what we wanted for a mood as we came back to school. And I'm gonna try to find somebody for some of the issues that we're dealing with at school right now that could help, uh, the return to school. So that's still, uh, a work in progress. I also included for all of you, the last page of that is just our coaching directory, just so, I know sometimes people don't know who's who, but that kind of gives you an idea of who everybody is. This is a, a public document, it is on the school website and I do share that with everybody.
Chris?
Um, I don't know if you've ever done this in the past, uh, if it's possible, but have you considered like bringing in someone to speak to your coaches? Um, you know, the reason I ask is, it seems like everything's getting more and more difficult these days, right? Uh, there's more to be concerned about, there's more to be aware of, there's more, um, challenges. Um, so I'm just throwing it out there as, as, as an idea. I don't know, like I said, if it's something you've done in the past or not, but I can imagine an expert, you know, sitting down with a small group of coaches could have a considerable impact, you know?
Yeah, so we are gonna do that in, um, sometime in August, more about mental health with our coaches. We have done that in the past as well.
Yep.
Um, to try to help them with that because it is, you know, coaching is becoming more and more difficult. It's becoming more and more difficult to attract coaches. Um, but that is something, Chris, that's definitely, you know, cause you might be an expert in being able to coach football, right? But you may not understand the psychology of recognizing when there are signs that we need to pay attention to and things like that.
Absolutely.
So, so for sure, that's something that we're gonna try to do in August.
And August is what? Is that the?
That would be with the coaches. That, you said trying to get a speaker in to kind of help the coaches.
That's what I was asking, I didn't know the dates, but yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's still, that, that's, that's still kind of, I'm hoping that, so my hope is that I'm gonna have a speaker that will then, a lot of times we bring speakers in to speak to parents and kids, that we then utilize them in other ways. And I'm hoping that the speaker that I have with the parents and kids will be able to then also work with my coaches in that area because that is the area that I'm, my focus is gonna be on.
Right.
Um, so that's what we're gonna try to do, uh, sometime around August 20th in that area.
Anything else?
Boston Sports Museum has a, uh, program for schools, uh, more relating to anti-bullying and they work closely with a couple of the sports organizations. Uh, I know I'd sent Jeff some information about it, God knows how long ago, last December, maybe?
Yeah, sometime, late, late winter.
Uh, I mean, some really, really interesting.
I'll look into it and I'll see, I'll try to find some other schools that you, have used it and see what they.
Yeah, and if you need a contact there, the gal that runs the program, I had a conversation with her.
Okay.
I'd be glad to pass that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? We do the field trips today?
I would like to do the field trip too, if you don't mind.
Motion to accept the field trips as presented in our packets for Orlando, for the boys' basketball, volleyball.
Um, girls', uh, volleyball was Orlando.
Yep.
Volleyball's Orlando. Uh, boys' basketball is Key West.
It's Key West, okay.
Girls' basketball is Troy, New York.
Okay.
And I'm gonna hold off on cheerleading until we figure out, uh, where they're going because we're not sure if it's gonna be Florida or Texas. So I'm gonna hold off on that one.
Motion to accept as presented with chaperone and other.
Yeah, all, all that stuff will go to the administration once we have that all squared away.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I could. We've talked in the past about field trips and I think it was really around Mass and we'd say, you know, when the kids are on these field trips, they adhere to all the same rules that they would if they were in school or school event. Does that, is that true with like discipline issues and whatnot that come back and be reported to the administration?
Yes.
Things like that, always?
Always.
Always? Okay, good.
Always.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Don?
Um, just to double check, it does say you'll come back to us with the forms for.
Yeah, once all the forms, so I, I wanted to get the approval because I don't wanna have the coaches, you know, obviously we have to commit to airlines and things like that, but you, we'll definitely have all of the coaches that are going, where they're gonna stay, all the flight information, all that will be, um, recorded through the office and then you, I'm sure Jeff will give you guys a copy of it as well.
Okay. And then it doesn't distinguish, is it anticipated these are just the varsity teams that are traveling?
Uh, it is all the varsity teams, yes.
Um, and fundraising or payment, you'll, you'll provide that?
For the most part, on, on almost all of the trips we do, there are some students that elect to not participate in the fundraising that teams do, but the amount of money that kids pay to go on any of the teams that have traveled, uh, they pay very little because they'll do the fundraising for it. But the school doesn't pay anything regardless of what happens, the school pays absolutely nothing, but the fundraising is done through the teams.
Okay. I would just ask, um, if it's the varsity team that's traveling, cause I had a prior experience where underclassmen were fundraising and then found out that it was, they were fundraising for varsity to travel on the trip.
Yeah, I don't think, so I actually don't, so sometimes somebody might have that perception, but that's definitely not the case. There's no team that has done fundraising as a team and used that money for the varsity to travel. They'll, they'll do fundraising and like, for example, they might have T-shirts or jackets or there might be other expenses that the program has, but the money that when teams do the fundraising for their travel, it is specific to the travel. I know there have been times, I've, I've had the same conversation with a parent about that. And I was able to show that parent where the fundraising money that they did for that went to.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Yeah.
And this is no cost to the district?
No cost to the district.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion.
In a second.
And a second? All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
And then the only other thing that I had in your packet, and unfortunately my, I could not print it out, so I hope that somebody here has it. It is just, um, an update of what we charge to advertise on the scoreboard. It is, uh, school committee policy that you all, you all set the rates for that. Um, that's my recommendation, what I, um, gave you. Um, I know that unfortunately in the budget process that you all just went through, you were not able to include that request I had for the uniforms. So teams are back to the thing where they have to raise money for their own uniforms. So I'm hopeful that, um, through the advertising that we have on the scoreboard and, and, you know, anybody that's watching this at home, not only are you making a donation to the school, but it is an incredible way to market your business. You know, you're at a football game on a Friday night, it's everybody in our community is there or you're at a basketball game and everybody in the community is, is at these games. And not only that, but the visiting teams that are wondering where they're gonna go to dinner after the game. You know, you throw it up there, it's good to have. So hopefully people will want to support us. They've been really good in the past with it and I just updated this for the committee so it was on record.
Okay, we need a load on?
Motion to set the advertising rates for the scoreboard as a gold sponsor for $1,000 or more, a silver sponsor, $500, a bronze sponsor, $250 and a friend of Whitman Hansen Athletics at $100.
Second.
Any questions? Yes, Fred?
Quick discussion, and I know I've said it in the past, I think it would be a wonderful project through a business class or DECA if we had salespeople market to the local businesses and restaurants and let them learn how to sell this.
I love that, yeah.
I think it would be a great thing.
I agree. I agree.
It's a good idea. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
The last thing I would say about that, just anybody that's watching this at home when their child plays a sport, the way that we do that is 50% of the money that, like, let's say somebody from the field hockey team, they get a $500 sponsor, 200, half of it goes into their student activities account for their goals and then half of it goes into the athletic account for the general running of the athletic department.
Nice.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
And, uh, I don't think I told you guys this yet, we finally did find an athletic trainer, Corey LaFavor. If anybody has met him yet, he's fantastic and, uh, was very glad to have him. Uh, if you have a chance to say hello to him, uh, when you're around, do that. Thank you, Mr. Bob.
Very good. Thank you.
George is gonna give us a brief, uh, update on our summer programs that will be starting next week.
In some cases, I have Indian copies so everybody can have an Indian copies back and front, so. So folks, if you will see on this list that's going around, we have programs mainly centered at the high school. We have 23 programs that run through the high school. Uh, those run everything from basketball, soccer camps, sports camps, robotics camps, science camps, 3D printer camps, our summer school, regular summer school and also our summer enrichment program. We also have the Whitman Middle School and the Hanson Middle School, both have sports and activities camps and those are running at the Whitman Middle School for five weeks, those are running at the Hanson Middle School for three weeks. The elementary principals got together and this year again, as tradition, the Conley School will be hosting Camp Conley. There'll be three weeks of that. That is open to all students in K to 5. Uh, all of those things have been distributed. Um, students at each school should have got it because the principals received all that information. And then we have at the bottom of the, either the first or second page, depending on which one you're looking at, all of our special ed programs that are taking place in the district. So it is gonna be very active. Uh, one change this year that we really did was we had specific remedial, uh, online training that took place at schools last year. We do not have that. There is an end to some of those fundings from ESAR. Those were funded by ESAR III and what we did this year and concentrated on was before school morning programs, um, at two of the elementaries and at one of the elementaries we had an after-school program because that principal decided it worked best for them. So, um, what you have on this back and front page is the, um, a snapshot of athletics, a snapshot of enrichment, a snapshot of special education, um, and also things like summer school and the traditional summer school that we all know of is growing up for students that need some credit recovery. And we also have our, um, enrichment program which identifies eighth graders, uh, incoming eighth graders, ninth graders and 10th graders who need some support and they have the ability to experience things such as field trips, such as real-life lessons, such as, um, classes that they could also take in the summer that would allow them to float some credits so that if they get behind during the normal course of the school year, those would be able to be applied. That's what you have in front of you.
George, I have a question. Um, on the enrichment, uh, do the teachers recommend the students for that program or is that sent to all or?
Uh, basically, there, there's a two-pronged approach. Basically, the, the counseling staff and the eighth grade staffs of each school and their counselors get together and they identify students of need. That is done from both how they're performing in the classroom and then how they've performed on things like their diagnostic in the MCAS. Then that goes, they get an invite that goes to parents and then through parent interaction, if they accept, that's how we build it. The process has grown. I will say that Chris Sutek, who runs it, is also now applying for a grant that'll hopefully have a pilot program like this during the school year, cause we have one during the school year at the high school, for the Whitman Middle School to begin with. That is hopefully what we're doing through DESI, there's a grant and we'll proceed. DESI. There's a grant, and we'll proceed. If it's at Whitman Middle School, there's a higher need at Whitman Middle School. We're doing it there first. If that works, then the following year, we'd like to do it throughout the school year and into the summer at the Hanson Middle School.
Very good. Thank you.
Hillary, go ahead. I just wanted to point out, so on the website, there are not links to any of the, like it says, coming soon, summer programs, but the links aren't there yet?
Correct. So I went over that with all of our principals and the people at the individual schools. I found some interesting things at some schools that date back to 2020 on the website, so we're cleaning those up. But all of these went out to, in the principals' memos and in what they sent out to the families, or they were supposed to have, because if you look at Camp Conley, I was in the meeting when all, when both Dr. Jocelyn and Dr. Foley received theirs. And I was also in another meeting when they said it was sent out, but I would have to check on that if that's what you're asking.
So my suggestion, just because I think with the data breach, and it might be user error too, I know that friends of mine are like, their email is spotty from the district, and it might be like a reset on their end. You know, we know that that was kind of messy. Making sure that like, if I want to go find the link, I can just go and find my kit through that instead of fishing through my email.
Absolutely.
That would just be a recommendation.
Okay, Chris?
George, these athletic camps, are those affiliated with the varsity programs, or are they something separate for a summer program?
They're, those are summer programs that are available to all the students at those grade levels.
Gotcha.
So if you look at boys lacrosse, it's grades four to nine.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember. I remember in the past, like Bob would run his boys camp and seeming, I seem to remember those grades being there, but I think this might be something separate. Is that?
Yeah, this is open to all the students. So he might have some of his athletes coaching it for the younger grades.
Oh, so it is what I'm thinking of. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's the traditional, some of the older high school kids take some of the smaller grades, and they move forward from that. What I didn't include on here was like the high school summer leagues, you know, which is the competitive summer league. I didn't include the flag football passing league or any of like that. These are things that are open to community members at all different ages.
I wish Bob was, I could have asked him about this, but I just know there's been some issues in the past with some of these camps not being as well structured as they maybe should be. So if there could be an effort to ensure that the coaches are prepared to, you know, so people spend their money, they get a value.
Yeah, I'll definitely go over that with them. No problem.
Fred?
Quick clarification. You said open all students?
Yes.
Students or residents?
Residents.
Oh, I'm sorry. There would be residents. Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, no, you're correct. It's open to residents.
You're correct.
Some of them, like the athletic camps, I know like the girls' basketball camp and the soccer camp, for example, I know like it's any town. Like that was, it's open to everybody. So I think that the ones on the back page, like the athletic camps, those are sort of those fundraising camps that the programs are doing.
And all those links are on the right-hand side of the athletic page of the high school when you go to it.
And my kids have been going, this will be, my son's going into fifth grade, he's been going since kindergarten and minus COVID, whatever. Like our experiences with all of those have been really great and positive, so.
As were mine when I was there.
As were mine.
Don?
More of a request, Jeff. When we get handouts like these and Bob's handout, can we have it added to our drive, maybe for our packet for tonight? So if we need to refer back to the last meeting's packet, this becomes part of the packet?
Sure, yeah. And then those will be added. Although, this is completely my fault because I was waiting on everybody to get that in.
No, that's okay, as well as Bob brought this handout.
That'll be addressed. No problem.
Steve, you got a question?
Yeah, is it me or is the Hanson Middle School somewhere activities? That first week seems like an awful long week.
You tell me, brother.
That June 26th to July 29th?
Yeah, that should be June 29th.
Do you want to work that, Steve?
You are correct. That should be June 29th. My apologies. And then I'll also just end with, we do a lot for students and residents, but we are also offering 10 virtual professional development classes for our staff this year. Heather Lincantino, who's our ed tech director, is offering them to all staff. They range, it's called the Summer 2023 Ed Tech PD. It's everything from touchboards, interactive boards, how to use them. It's for Go Guardian, which is what we use in classes to make sure students are doing the right thing on their Chromebooks. It's now with ChatGPT in education and what educators could use, would like to use. It's on things like EdPuzzle, Google Classroom, Google Practice Sets, which is out there, Canva. So there's a lot that we're offering, and people have the ability to do, not just from the student experience, but also from the academic teacher experience.
Anything else?
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Mr. Stambro.
Here we go.
The busiest man in the district.
I know. I think it's George.
Ah, he is too. Right. They share that title.
Good evening to the chair. Good evening, everyone on the committee. The, just going to start off with an update on state aid. And if you're, if you're looking at documents in the drive, there are documents number one and two. If you just have the paper copy, the first document is the one that says at the top that it's a cherry sheet comparison for fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '23, and that's document one. And document two is something from the Department of Local Services, the DLS, that gives our actual amounts. So I think at the last meeting, the Senate was meeting, I think, and I didn't, I couldn't give an update on what the Senate Ways and Means Budget was going to be, although I think Mr.--
They did it at like 6 o'clock.
It got it to me right after the meeting, so I thank you for that. So the document one, the one that says the cherry sheet comparison, the top part is a comparison between last year's state aid and this year's state aid, if the Senate budget is, ends up getting passed into law. And just quickly, if you look at that, we have $405,861 more in a net assessment in cherry sheet aid, or 1.62%. Then the second grouping there is the cherry sheet aid versus what we voted in the fiscal year 20, or you voted in the fiscal year '24 approved budget. And you can see that the Senate budget is $148,911 under what we voted as a budget. And again, mostly that is related to charter schools sending tuition. You see that, that's under the general fund assessments. See charter schools sending tuition. The governor's budget was $1.19 million, and the Senate budget is 1.367 or $177,000 up. So those are assessments that we have to pay to the state every month. So right now, we're $148,911 or minus 0.58% down. But, and then down the bottom, it has, I just made a quick list of the state budget process. As you can see, we're on step six now, which is a conference committee. After the Senate votes its final budget, the conference committee of people at the House and the Senate get together and hammer it out, what budget to go with, because there's a House budget and Senate budget and the governor's budget. So don't know where that's going to end up, but I just wanted to give an update on that.
Good question. Going back up, FY '24 voted budget amount for regional transportation, $1,483,708.
Yes.
Does that include, no, I'm inundated. Is that why that number's so much higher? Because I thought we used 90% as our placeholder. And I know the House, the House number was supposedly at 100%, and that's only at 1.3.
So the Senate budget and the House budget is at 1.239, it was the same number. They're going by what we had in FY '22 actuals. That's all they have to go by. FY '23 actuals, when we're done, is going to be more than this. So this, I don't know how much more, because we haven't done all the--
Right, because you're always a year behind.
Right. So it's very likely that 148,911 is going to be reduced by an amount, and I don't know what that amount is until the year's over.
So that's going to affect the monies with our assessment, et cetera?
Yes.
So we're actually more in the, or--
We may be better than this looks, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, anything else? Okay, go ahead.
Then the next will be document number three, which is a capital projects activity for the district through September 30th. And then also document four is a bond anticipation note that we went out to market, I think it was last week, the treasurer went out to market. So under the capital projects, the, this is just an update of through September 30th. I know it's, I know it's June, and this is only through September, but this is the first time you're seeing, these are all the projects, the capital projects that are still active as of six months ago or nine months ago, whenever in September is. There are 13 active Whitman projects. There are 14 active Hanson projects. There are nine high school-related projects. The total is 1.9 million, but that's just, what I'm doing is I'm going month to month and billing them as we go. So I'm in the process of billing October right now, and it's approximately $600,000 to the town. So as we, it's a laborious process to go through and find every single invoice and bill them to the town. But we have to get this in. So this is just a document just to say, these are the ones that are out there. It's going to be updated every month as we, as I go through and close out the, and apply the expenses that we've already paid to the right project. On document number four, that's the bond anticipation note. So this is a bond anticipation note that's for $500,000 related to the Whitman Middle School feasibility study and $120,000 related to Hanson Middle School's HVAC system, for a total of $620,000. The treasurer, David Leary, went out to the market through Unibank Fiscal Advisory Services. We got two bidders on our bond anticipation note. They call it a rollover, where we're taking the borrowing and we're rolling it over to the next year. The two bidders were Unibank and Newburyport Five Cent Savings Bank. The winner was Unibank for savings at 4.7%. So that's a, I think it was two years ago, February, I think it was July of '22, I think it was .55. I'm trying to remember. So rates are up a lot. It used to be advantageous to short-term borrow because short-term borrow rates were so low. It was better than long-term borrowing. With this type of market, it may not be, we need to look at how we structure our debt going forward because this is--
John, hold on. Fred has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two things, but that, one thing is that's specifically related to the Whitman feasibility study, correct?
Yes. And the $500,000 of it is, and it's $120,000 really in the Hanson HVAC. It's a 620 altogether.
Okay.
Like combine the two to save on borrowing and issuing costs, issuance costs.
Okay. Going back to the capital projects?
Yes.
Because, I mean, from September 30th and obviously to have, you know, almost $2 million. Accounting-wise, we paid probably most of that, if not all of it. Would that be a fair assessment?
A fair portion of it, yes.
So where has that money come from out of our budget from FY '23? And if we send that to the town and we get that in in a timely manner, we have to have the money back by June 30th in our account so that it will get certified as E and D for the next fiscal year. Is that correct?
Any, any, these are, every one of these is a potential hit to E and D, yes, excess and deficiency. But the Department of Revenue allows revenue that comes in between June 30th and September 30th to be applied to any type of deficit that might, that might exist. So for example, that this, we're talking about the Whitman mold from last, from last year. Let's say theoretically, Whitman had decided to pay that on August 31st, and we got the check on August 31st. We'd have a deficit in that fund, but it would not hit E and D because we actually received the money in the first three months of the next fiscal year.
But I think they did that in the special--
No, I know. I just used that as an example.
Okay, because I was going to say, we should be able to have that money now.
Yes. So my goal is to get every one of these bills out and in the hands of the towns as fast as possible.
Where do we stand? Because we can't deficit spend. Where do we stand on our budget right now, you know, 20-something days before the end of the calendar year?
So these are, these are capital projects that are, that are in deficits at the moment until we build them.
But we've spent the money. We've issued payments, so where did that money come from?
It came from our operating cash.
Right. So if we're taking money from our operating cash, then we're doing, theoretically, we don't have an extra $1.9 million in our budget to pay out and not get paid back. So I'm wondering where we're at in our--
So it's not, it's not part of the general fund budget, because these are all capital projects, so they're entirely separate from the general fund budget. So it's not like we hit a general fund budget line, and we've hit the line that it should be on these capital projects, and they're in deficit until we build them.
Right, but we must have, if we paid the money, we must have had the money from somewhere that you'll get to a point where you'll not have money.
We have, yes, we had operating cash that was available to pay these at the time.
But are we close to running out in our whole--
We need to get these bills out as soon as possible. That's--
And we have to get paid by the end of the year?
By the towns, yes.
Maybe we can get updated, emailed, or put in our drives, you know, as of June 30th?
As, I'm doing them--
Because it was going until July.
I'm doing them each month. As soon as I get a month done, I'll update the sheet.
Yeah, I just go, who authorizes the amounts?
Town meeting.
Town meeting. Why is it, I mean, it's 54% over-authorized on these, you know, like one of these is, it was $15,000, but they spent 360. It seems excessive to authorize 3.5 million and only spend 1.9. Literally all of them, pretty much, you're authorizing on this, the roadway replacement, 200 grand, but only spending 40?
This is, this is just a snapshot in time. So the authorization by the town with 200,000.
I got you. Okay.
And we've spent 40.
This isn't a completed project?
No.
Okay.
We still have 160,000 of potential expenses.
Got it. That's, yeah, that's my question.
And usually, Glenn, we come in about, you know, 2%, 3% close.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because I'm like, that's 54%.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is rectify this so that--
Doing a terrible job.
When John came on pre-breach, we found accounts that were open from 2,000.
Seriously? Like authorized in 2,000 and still--
Your 2,000, John found $5,000 in that account that was never closed out.
Got it.
So we started trying to kick everything back to the towns and--
Each project gets its own account?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's labor, labor-intensive, and then this is where we're at right now. So all of these projects, most of these have been completed but not thoroughly built to the towns yet.
Got it.
So.
Anybody else? John?
This is right, this is as of September 30th?
Yes.
Right? Okay, so we're going back to last fall, these numbers. So other transactions may have occurred since then.
Absolutely, they have, yes. I just haven't got there.
Two or 3%, you said, at the end?
Usually, you know, sometimes it's 10 grand. Depends on the scope of the project. If somebody comes in, a vendor comes in cheaper than we, what the town meeting for, it goes back to the town. See, the piece here is, it doesn't go in the district budget. This is all town funds. So once we exhaust the project and sign off on it, we give it back. We don't bill the town that, and they can rectify their account right now, because it's in their pot of capital project money. So the sooner we can expedite that process, so the town then has excess cash to be able to move it around. But right now, this is all encumbered funds, and we're trying to clean it out.
Anyone else? Okay, next, John.
And then the last one is the, at the, as, on June 30th, any amounts that are in excess and deficiency or E and D roll over to next year, and then, and there's nothing that you can, you can't appropriate from that fund until it gets certified again by the Department of Revenue. So there's, you know, there's been discussion in the committee about taking $650,000 out to deal with some of the data breach-related expenses. This is the last meeting to do that, if, unless you're going to meet before June 30th again. Otherwise, if you wait until July 1, technically, E and D doesn't exist because it rolls over, it will be, wait until the Department of Revenue certifies it, so.
Yeah, this is all in discussion. We never voted on it officially, so we need--
I motion to appropriate the sum of $650,000 from the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District excess and deficiency fund balance to defray the data beat, data breach, we still think in that, related expenses incurred by the district during the fiscal year 2023. Second.
Okay, any question? Yes.
After this is allocated, what's our remaining E and D? We knew that was coming.
So we had, we had $1,718,004 in E and D. For the fiscal year '24 budget, $500,000 was appropriated to its budget. This $650,000 is an additional amount, so we'll have $568,004.
Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to the vote, please. All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. This next item for me is in your, in the drive, if you have it. And we'll make sure you have it. We have placed the school improvement plans of all the schools, handbook changes from the high school so far, and a copy of our draft of our strategic plan, which I'm hoping to have you read through. Some of them are pretty lengthy, so we can discuss and vote on at our July meeting.
Okay.
So instead of trying to rush through it here, Beth and I spoke, and we're going to meet in July. It would be, you know, beneficial for you to be able to read those, have questions. We can talk about it and vote them in July.
Can I just, for the handbook changes at the high school, if Dr. Jones isn't available, I think sometimes it's helpful to hear the conversations at the school council level around some of those changes, or like the, if they have a, like some schools have a faculty that looks at the handbook and then like just for background?
So, so we'll probably do the handbook in, in August. I just dropped them in now for you.
Anything else?
Just to clarify, so for the strategic plan, because I did read through it, and I have some sort of questions, discussion items, if it's not appropriate tonight, I can hold them for the next time. But you're anticipating questions, discussion, and vote at the next one?
We can vote in August as well, depending on where the committee feels. I mean, there's no, there's no timeline, you know what I mean? I think it's our strategic plan. If there are questions that we need to go through in July and make modifications, it'd be, it'd be fine.
Yeah. It, it, you know, from what I read, it's very detailed, and it's very impressive, and clearly, a lot of work went into it. I just know that it's such an important document that, you know, I think it deserves more than one night, maybe, of even discussion.
Again, that's, that's why I don't want to expedite that tonight, you know, and try to push through it. As school ends, we try to, a lot of times, we finish as a school committee. We finish now and then, okay, we take a little bit of a break during the summer. I'd like to continue that on, so we can, we can finish some of those important items without rushing.
And we also had the discussion that one of the things we might do in the future is when it comes time for budget talks, to have a separate school committee meeting, a second meeting of the month, just on budget, so that we do not have to spend our school committee time the whole night on the budget. Let's have some of the schools in to tell us what they're doing, some neat things that the kids are doing, that we don't do any, we don't have that anymore. So like the unified track and field, which was new this year, that, very important that I think we hear about that and best, with the best buddies and things like that. So we've had that discussion, and years ago, when I was on school committee, we would have two meetings a month. And when we got to real heavy budget, we do have more than one meeting a month usually. But we were talking about, like in the fall, that when we start our budget conversations, to have a separate meeting, school committee meeting with a budget and deal with it separately, so that we can get our other things done in a timely manner. And that's one of the things that we brought up with-- up with having, seeing the things tonight, talking about them. If you're ready to vote the next meeting, fine. If you're not, then we can put it off to the next one. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, I just kind of piggyback on what you just said, Beth, about having some of the programs and whatnot come to us and share what they're doing, maybe perform, maybe share their art, whatever. Like, that is, I, I think, a great idea. And I think that's, you know, that should be our bread and butter, really. It, it, we should be, we should be recognizing and celebrating and, and, you know, focusing on all we can do to, you know, just make this school district the most inviting, you know, place it can be and inclusive and all that. So, I applaud that. I appreciate it.
Right. Well, I think we'd like to see what goes on, because a lot of times, we don't get to see that. So, yes, Michelle.
I just want to add, I'm 100% thrilled to hear that. I'm a huge proponent of talking about students and education and their activities. Jeff, thank you for that presentation of the students and graduation and where they're going and where they're landing. I think as a school committee, we do have to always remember that. There's so many good things that go on at this school. We should be proud of our students and our staff. So, I appreciate that you're recognizing that and it can be part of what we talk about. So, thank you, Jeff, for that update as well.
Brett?
Instead of having the students come here and make presentations, I think it'd be a great thing for the committee to hold a meeting at the individual schools.
We could do that.
And do it right there. You know, A, we get to be in the facility, see in the facility. B, they probably are much more comfortable in their own surroundings. Take the show on the road.
Yeah, we can do that, too.
The main rea, I love that. The main reason we get stuck here sometimes is the, the video recording. But if we can work with WHCA to travel, and they've talked to me about traveling, we can make that happen.
Okay.
Awesome. I'm good.
You're good? You're done. Okay. So, back to what I made a mistake before. So, superintendent's evaluation. So, if I look at the general, looking at all the, what everybody put, the majority, I would have to say was proficient. Some needs improvements because the goals weren't, some people would like the goals to be a little more specific. I know with goal writing, sometimes, and I know Hillary can say with me on that, sometimes you want to be a little broad so that you can add things to the goals or not. And, but sometimes you do need to be a little more specific. And I think, what a good idea with that, if you feel that one of the superintendent's goals is not specific enough, if you could, at the time when he's presenting his goals, could talk about that at that point in time, so he can make corrections, additions, or whatever, or maybe not, maybe he can just explain why his goal is such that it is. As we know, goals can't be completed in one year for a lot of times. For instance, the middle school building is not going to be one year. It's going to be several. A couple comments, they, that you worked through tough challenges this year, but still worked towards your goals. People were happy about the culture and climate being improved with Nikki doing her things. And you were mentioned, actually, Nikki. And some of that, some would like some more improvement and with, that, well, they liked the safe and secure schools. A lot of people brought that up, with the increase with the technology, with the increase in our security. Really liked that. Some, that was the question, was, some people thought that how you handle your supervision of your staff and the teachers is fine, and some thought that you could be more open communication. And that was some of that. Also, there was family and community engagement. A lot of people have said that you have improved greatly with that, and they appreciated that, knowing that there had to be a lot of that with the breach information and still continuing with COVID. So, I open it up to if anybody would like to add to the comments that they put for Jeff. Steve?
Yeah. You know, I had a nice conversation with Jeff at the Georgetown, and I appreciated everything that he said to me. And we do have our, times when we, our conversations are just, you know, it's words passing as we're passing each other because it's, things are quick, things are always moving and so forth. But Jeff, I, I just truly appreciate what you do, day in and day out. You know, nothing, things, I know they convey, they phase me. I mean, here I am stumbling to get my mojo right for tonight's meeting by arriving five minutes late, knowing that Apple is taking a certain camera adapter off their iOS. You have to hear my problems. But, you know, when you, yeah, when you talk about these things, you're like, I can just imagine what Jeff's dealing with. You know, you can put it in, in some sort of context or, or perspective. But I have never, ever felt anything but pure gratitude for what, for what you do, for our students, our staff, our communities. Yeah, there's a lot of things that we can all go into, and, but I just appreciate what you are. You know, Westridge Water really turned you into a, quite a, quite a stellar person. I can't get you on any Stanley Cup-winning team, though. That's your own. But thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Beth.
Anyone else in their comments? Yes, Don?
I would just add some feedback, more so in regards to the format of the evaluation that we need to fall into, to align with your goals. So, and that was one of my, I guess, struggles in completing this, because we did approve your goals as written. So, you know, you're evaluated as such. But the way the rubric indicates, you know, the standards and then the focus indicators. So, I feel like as a committee member, and maybe as a committee going into next year's goals, maybe I would like some professional development or training on, you know, utilizing this rubric to better, not better evaluate you, but evaluate you in line with the way you.
The evaluation's a tough tool. It's a tough tool. It doesn't, it doesn't read well.
Right. And it's got these focus indicators, and evidently, I think we're supposed to pick one indicator that, that lines with your goals. So, I did my best to sort of choose that and evaluate you as such. And, and we, we had a conversation one-on-one, so I don't need to repeat all of that. But I'm just sort of looking ahead, as Beth alluded to, you know, in, in setting next year's, in those goals.
Just, just from a structural standpoint, Desi is, is, will be adopting a new administrators' rubric next year.
Oh, good.
I'm sure it'll be not something easy, don't get me wrong. But for administrators, it goes in next year. It's a pilot for staff, teaching staff, but that, the teaching staff one will go into effect the year after. So, there will be a new rubric, still has elements and standards and indicators. But I do think we could probably work on how to make it easier for everybody, more digestible, and easier to connect goals with what's happening. But there will be a new one next year, so there'll be more to come.
Yeah. And I think it is difficult, because looking at it and having had to do goals myself, I find, I found this difficult to follow myself. And I've had to do this. So, not, but not as tough as this. But, I mean, I, I found it difficult, too. Yes, Hillary?
I mean, I think to Don's point, like, when you talk, as a teacher, the people who fill out evaluations for me are trained, like, have countless hours on training on how to conduct these evaluations and how to do them and what they're looking for. And we don't have anything as school committee members. So, I think, I mean, for me, it's easier to see because it's language that I work with on a daily basis. But I just wonder if there is something through MASC that we could all do, thinking of the workshops that, you know, we're always looking for something. I think that that might be helpful because you could really get into this. I mean, you know, when you look at the teacher evaluation, like, how it strips everything down, this doesn't necessarily go that deep. I guess it kind of does. But that is, that's the part that is just so baffling to me, is that we have no training whatsoever. And none of us look at this. I mean, maybe one of the things we can think about doing in the fall when you present your goals is having a copy of this ahead of time and sort of, like, knocking it off and saying, like, okay, you know, because we look at them ahead of time before we approve them for you, right? Like, we kind of go to first read and second read. So, maybe that's a suggestion that we have, like, the rubric ahead of time, so we can kind of know.
And then we'll know what we're looking for.
Yeah.
You know? So. Did, my minions over there would like to speak.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Chris.
That's okay. Sorry. It's, you know, I was gonna kind of comment on the, the rubric, and I've always kind of, it's always been clunky and I always feel like I'm doing it wrong. And I just, yeah. So, it's good to hear that they may be changing it up. Second thing I wanted to say is, I've been around Jeff a long time now. And I, Jeff has all the sensibilities that I'd want in a leader. I, I just wish there were more people around that shared those sensibilities. So, you know, my hope is that we can, we can spread it out and grow it and, and, you know, improve. It's always looking to improve. Well, thank you.
Yeah. I, I am going against what I said at the beginning, but that's okay.
No, we hope to get recognized if we couldn't.
Yes. If I have.
Cindy Mcgann, WHA, we just wanted to speak to the relationship that we have with Jeff and George across the table. For the first time in a long time, there's been dialogue. We meet monthly. And there's heart in the administration now, along with some compassion. And they're, we're listening on both sides. And it's nice to be heard and be able to work with administration the way that we have been this past couple of years, which is great. So, it's important for you all to know that.
Yeah. It's been very positive and certainly a credit to Jeff and, and his team. I remember being a, a young dad, being excited and looking at the What to Expect When You're Expecting book, you know, the dad's version. And then, of course, my kids were completely outside of the book, right? Nothing applied. So, this year, and what we've experienced, completely out, outside of, like, the superintendent's owner manual or anything else. And they've had to deal with so many issues, you know, inside the school, outside the school, and they've done a banner job. So, we're very fortunate to help. So, I'm gonna tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak just a minute?
Yes.
Thanks. So, in pure honesty, it's very hard to get evaluated publicly. It's just hard. But I appreciate all the feedback that I get from each and every one of you, and I value your opinion. Sometimes we might not agree, and that's, I think, okay, because that's that relationship we should have and, and push each other. I value this community more, I think, more and more every day. I enjoy working here. I actually enjoy driving in every morning. Some days, a little bit more than others. It, it, it's not without its challenges. Every day is very different. But I, I get a tremendous pleasure from doing the job I do. And I'm lucky to be in the role that I'm in with the faculty and staff that we have and the kids. And it's all about the kids. And when Beth and I spoke a little bit about how we are going to form this committee, it's about the kids. And we need to continue to talk about all the good things our kids do and how we can support our staff to prepare those children to walk across that stage, any stage that they get across, get to. And some, they take a, a long time. And some, you know, it, it's not that difficult for them. But that's our job as a committee. And me having that role to provide you the information to make the best possible choices you have is something I, I look, I look forward to. I look for the challenges. And if you have challenges for me, please keep sending my way. It's, it's, it's a pleasure every year. This is hard. Evaluation is hard. But evaluation is a tool that you learn from. So, we used to tell, I used to tell my kids that. If you make a mistake, you can fix it. You show it on your evaluation, learn from it. So, everything that I've gotten tonight, and Beth and I'll go over the, the evaluation, I'll learn from. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So, next part, the subcommittee's assignments. So, I'd like to see, like, two people on, maybe like, three on the warrant. As, so, on the RAC, do we need more, or do we need one from everybody?
So, I, no. So, Regional Agreement Committee, we don't really have to redo. I just need a Hanson.
Right. That's what I mean, just a Hanson person.
Chris, if you want to continue on with RAC, you absolutely can.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I just want to say, I think we publicly discussed in the past that it was going to be reorganized. So, if that's not the case, I'm, I'm happy to do it. But I just want to clarify.
I think consistency would be very good on that, just we lost eight. And when I said to, when Chris was leaving, we need, just needed a, we need a Hanson member on that, on that team. And then, we have to reorg that committee because Chris was the chair.
Yep, yep.
Just a question. I know, I, what is a warrant subcommittee?
That's what you go and sign, you sign the warrants.
I sign them all the time.
That's right. There you go. That's a warrant.
Okay.
All right. So, why don't we start, why don't we start with the?
I don't work in the morning, so.
Let's start with capital and operations. Who would like to be on that? Anybody? Steve? Anybody else? Capital and operations. No?
What is it? Can I ask what it is?
It's working with, looking at what's going on capital-wise, facilities.
Just what you were looking at on that sheet.
It's the spending.
Okay. That's it.
All those budgets.
You need another person? Yes.
Yes.
Come here.
Love to have a balance between the two towns, too.
Okay.
That's good. Okay, Glenn, very good. The budget subcommittee. Okay, David, Don, Steve. Okay, let's see, David and Don. And can we have three?
I didn't see.
Traditionally, we've had three. The last couple of years, it was Chris, Steve, and I.
If you don't need me, I mean, but.
David, David, Don, and Steve. It's important.
Yep.
Okay, policy. Okay. All right. Three? You need three, you want, you four, so. Yeah, you want to back.
I was on it, too, but.
Oh, yeah, it's fine. I'm sorry.
I don't need, I just took a different one, so.
Okay. And Hillary? Okay. And Michelle? Okay, who wants to sign the warrants?
I'll sign the warrants.
Okay, glad. And David and Michelle? I'm not just gonna put myself in somewhere. Okay, Chris, the regional, do I have a Hanson person who would like to be on the regional agreement?
Hillary.
Hillary? Very good. Thank you.
We probably won't meet until the end of the summer.
Sounds good.
By the time they, I get back from work. Right.
All right. So, now, the pilgrim area, is that usually Steve?
I do mind. I mean, if anybody did want to jump in, I absolutely.
It's the Seavey's Committee at this point. It's all you. Come on now.
I don't think anybody's gonna do that. I, you know, I mean, it's like.
I just follow in, in Sue McSweeney's footsteps. What she had done for this district.
The representative, that's you, right?
I just need to be voted in.
Oh, he needs to be voted in also.
Or just selected. I mean, if I'm not, I.
Yeah. We just elected you.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Awesome.
Okay. Now, is there anybody who didn't get on a committee who would like to be on one, a subcommittee? And we can just have three on? Or anything else? Okay. I think, I'll put myself on the capital, the capital.
Okay.
Just for doing something.
George, just got a question.
Yes? A what?
Self-shirt collab? Yeah, me.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be, it has to be a super, yeah, it has to be a superintendent.
Yeah, you got me.
Yeah.
Same with North River.
Same with North River. And I'm, you voted me in already.
Yes.
Yeah, we did that one, right?
I needed that for the board.
Yeah. Okay. So, Jeff?
Who was budget?
Uh, budget is David, Don, and Steve.
Okay. You?
You can jump on if you want.
No, I'm good. The chair?
Yes.
Well, we, is David gonna stay the student outreach, or is that for, like, the fall, maybe, to talk about?
Well, I think it'd be important to talk about it now. That way, we can prep any returning members if they want to do the workshops over the summer, so they have the opportunity and then also get the freshmen.
Yeah, we didn't have that on, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I forgot about that, too, myself. So, yeah, that's a great point.
Anybody want to make a motion to have David do it?
I'll motion for David to remain student advisory.
Thank you.
Student outreach.
Coordinator.
Coordinator.
Couple others.
Okay. All in favor? David?
Thank you.
Okay, unanimous. Okay.
Thanks, both on. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I didn't even, yeah.
Do you want to set a date for July? Or you want to have people look at their calendars?
I think, would you rather look at your calendars at home and get back to us? What is easier for the committee?
You mean, check with the boss?
I can do any Wednesday.
We do not. We don't have a meeting scheduled yet for July.
No. No. A lot of times, we don't have schedule specific in the summer. But we're not doing working groups this year, so I'd like to.
I'm open for every Wednesday, so it doesn't matter to me.
All right. Well, why don't we say, is there a Wednesday that somebody can't make that they know?
I can't do the 12th.
Okay.
Yeah, George, we'll be, we'll be down. Nash, be anywhere.
It's my anniversary, spending with Jeff, the superintendent.
Yeah, we take a nice sunset photo together.
Any other day that people can't make?
The end of July is tough. Like, the 19th seems, whatever. I mean, I can, if I have to call in, I can call in, but.
Are we looking at a particular week?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say the first week is.
I was thinking the 19th, that's like, kind of when we meet anyway in the month.
Let's do the 19th. Is the 19th good? Yeah, 19. 19. Perfect.
Okay.
Wow.
Wish I was on it.
Thank you, guys.
That's awesome. So, that's good.
Things are going so well.
Thank you.
Things are going so well.
That's a good comment about it. Glenn, can you do it a little earlier in the summer, or no? It's 6:30, or can you?
My time, I can, Wednesdays, I can, I don't work Wednesdays, so.
Want to go a little earlier, now that it's the summer?
We can do early, I can do any time on Wednesday.
How does everybody feel, because other people work, so.
Six o'clock?
I, now, it's stuck, right?